We give you praise for all that you do. And then just your prayer, right, Seth?
Amen.
Ohio County Schools provide students with the skills, knowledge, and support to achieve excellence. You've got a lifelong learners. All right, y'all have your agendas in front of you. We have added a number thirteen. Purchase of a special needs bus. Is there anything you'd like to pull off to discuss? Or something else you would like to add at this time? If not, any motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any more comments or any comment? All right. Motion, Carrie. All right, we don't have no presentation, no recognition?
No, sir.
Nobody here is saying? Board members have anything?
All's well when it's in front.
Uh, yes, sir, I do, as usual. A few things I'd like to just share. As you're aware and as you just prayed about, thank you for doing so, Mr. Evans. Uh, we will be in school with our hybrid schedule starting on Monday, the twenty-first. I had talked with each of you, either on the phone or via text, and make sure I got your blessing before we announce that, but we have announced that and are moving forward. That way, we will have two weeks of in-person instruction before we take off for fall break. Uh, looking at the hybrid schedule, as I've told you all on the phone, most of our numbers are very, very manageable. When you look at the elementary level, a common number that you see is eight.
Yeah, I'll be with them every time yesterday when I did the classroom tour of White. The kindergarten had the highest numbers at like ten and eleven or twelve or something like that.
At Beaver Dam, you're correct. Their highest was kindergarten, and you have ten, eleven in each room. Uh, so rarely do you have those numbers. There are a few of them, but it's not very many. About the biggest number you see at the elementary level is eleven. Most numbers are single digits. Now, when you get to middle school, that changes a little bit. But again, you see numbers from nine to twelve. Typically, twelve is about as high as you're going to see. There might be one or two exceptions, but most of the time, twelve is a common number. When you get to high school, you see numbers more like eleven to thirteen. Every now and then, there's a class that may have fourteen in it or so, but most of the time, and when I say most of the time, what I did was look at the core classes. I looked at English to see the A B breakdown. And then pretty much, that freshman class that's massive, when you look at those freshman numbers, most of the time, you saw thirteen, every now and then, of fourteen kids in the classroom. So the numbers are manageable. So keep in mind, with hybrid, we're splitting it in half, but you're splitting in half those that are choosing to come to school. Who already have that certain percentage, that fifteen to twenty percent, that are choosing to do online. So at the high school that are going virtual, you have close to three hundred students that are choosing to stay on virtual. That number's a little bit less. Uh, when I was visiting with the high school today, they showed me that since we've made the decision to go to school in person, there's been about twelve students moved to virtual. But there's been twenty-five to thirty leave virtual to say that they're coming to school starting next week. So more have come back to school than we have lost. So I, I, obviously, there, I'm sure there are some that are concerned. I would be lying if I tell you I'm not a little bit concerned about everybody coming back together. But as a whole, everyone is excited. Teachers are ready to have kids back in the building. They want to see their faces again. They want to be working with them. I know kids are excited to be coming back to school. As strange as that sounds, you know, usually, kids love summer vacation, but summer vacation has lasted six months this year. And they're ready to come back to school. Uh, the ones that I've been seeing, I like to stop and ask them questions, and they're like, I want to go back to school. This remote thing is okay, but I, I'd rather be back in school and actually seeing my teacher and seeing some of my friends. Uh, yeah, we will have to be wearing these masks, uh, at least to start the process. That's what we'll be utilizing. Hopefully, that will loosen up as time goes on. But even in talking to the, to kids, and especially my own two sons, they're like, Dad, we'll gladly wear that mask as long as we're back in school. We just, we just want to be back. That this remote thing is going okay, but it's not the same. We, we learn better hearing directly from our teachers in the classroom. So I'm excited to get back starting on Monday. Obviously, we updated our, if you saw that on the website or the Facebook page, we updated our reopening plan, made some changes again, notified everyone about the masks, uh, reviewed some of the processes and how our plan was approved by the Health Department. We'll be disinfecting and cleaning each and every night, and we'll be cleaning throughout the day when possible. You know, we'll be cleaning the restrooms regularly. We will be at the middle school and high school during class exchanges. We will be cleaning the desks before the next group arrives. That way, if someone was to be sick, whatever the case sickness may be, that desk will be cleaned before the next student comes in and has his, has their, has their place at that desk.
Are they going to do it one way down the hall?
As best we can. At the schools, we're going to eliminate traffic flow and try to get everybody going the same direction. Now, some of our schools, that's not going to be possible because they only have one hallway, but we're going to do the best we can there. Uh, lunch, if you've been in any of the schools, and you probably haven't right now, since things are different. But, uh, lunchrooms, like for the high school, all their lunchroom tables are pushed to the side, and we call them the A C T tables, but they're just long, narrow tables that they would usually set out when we do testing each year. That's what they have in the cafeteria. They're all facing the same direction, and those tables are long enough, you can sit a kid on each end, and they're right around six feet apart. And then those tables are spread out so we can get around a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty kids in the cafeteria at once. We will, because we may have one forty each lunch period, there might be twenty or th- twenty to thirty students have to go to the gym, and we've pushed in one section of the bleachers, and we will set up those tables, and one classroom may have to go eat in the gym. They'll go through the lunch line and then take their food up there to make sure we have plenty of room. Middle school has actually put desks. They have desks on in their cafeteria, all facing the same direction, because that's the recommendation, the requirement, face the same direction. That way, they're not facing one another. Beaver Dam Elementary, I know Ms. Tishner sent me a picture today of her gym, her cafeteria, and they've done the same thing. They have desks where they placed, and they're all facing a certain wall. So everybody will come and sit at a desk, the desks are six feet apart. Channel fourteen news, uh, King Ba called me yesterday. They went to Beaver Dam today and interviewed the principal. And Monday morning, they'll be there from a distance outside, getting some footage to do a little story, a little feature on Ohio County Schools, and that was channel fourteen. New metric, that's the hottest topic, if you will, if you've, uh, seen the latest on what was released, I guess it was Monday. So that's those handouts that I've passed out to you, just so that you could get a glimpse of what it may look like. Each and every day, I signed up for it, actually, this afternoon. Each and every day, every school is going to be required to report to the Kentucky Department of Health, also K D E, what our numbers were for that day. And it's, it's basically four questions. Did you have any students that were, that you were notified as being positive with COVID? And if so, how many? So you put zero to whatever that number may be, same question for staff. And then, do you know of anyone in your building that's been quarantining? How many students, how many staff? That will have to be reported each day. So I'm going to ask the school, they're going to have to know that information. But instead of them reporting it, I'm going to have them send that information here, and we're going to report it each day on behalf of all of our schools. That way, we one hundred percent know what has occurred. Right now, that's going to be me, that they're going to have them send that to, and I'll report on that spreadsheet each and every day. But I will have a backup here. That way, if I'm out of pocket, someone else will log in, uh, perhaps Mr. Hoover. And that way, he can put in those numbers if I'm not here. That way, that way, it's always done. Same way at the Health Department, when they're notified of someone testing positive or quarantining, they're contacting me. They already have. Right now, we'll tell you, obviously, not giving any, uh, other identification. Other than right now, we do have three students in Ohio County Schools that have tested positive. One student is elementary at Beaver Dam. They are virtual, so they won't be returning. There's one student at middle and one at high that do plan on attending, but because they tested positive earlier this week, they're not going to be attending until the Health Department clears them to attend. So I have those names, and I've shared those with the administration. Uh, one of the cases, the principal's already talked to the family, and the family knows when their kid can be cleared, when they get to come to school. They won't be here that first week of school. That's going to happen. The schools that are in session, Warren County has been in session for several weeks now. They have been a county that's been in red the whole entire time. They have cases, but it's been very manageable. It's been single digits at each school. I don't think even in their district that they never really had a day where they've had double digits. It's just been a few here or there at a school. It's been things that they've been able to maintain and, and not cause a big hurdle. There's been very few staff and very few students. But I do want you to be aware, it's going to happen. So, and, and that's the message I'm trying to tell all of our staff when I'm at the schools, because some of our teachers are nervous. Folks, listen, I guarantee you, sometime in the next month or so, somebody in your building is going to be positive, whether it be a student, or a teacher, or some other staff, it's going to happen. But as long as we still have substitutes, and as long as we can quarantine and keep functioning, my goal is to remain on a hybrid schedule as long as we can physically continue serving our students safely. If we ever get to that point where we can't, then we'll back up and, and do something different. And that leads me to this docu- these documents. The first one is just an example of, once we report it, they said, this is what it will look like. There'll be a, a page that will be basically for Ohio County Schools, and it'll, it'll give about, it'll tell how many students have tested positive, how many staff, and they'll provide a little graph to show you a trend line. Are we going up? Are we staying the same, going down, whatever the case may be? So you, we'll get a report that'll be shared out weekly on the state page, that'll be basically just for Ohio County. And we will put that actually even on our website. That way, any parent wants to look on a weekly basis, they'll be able to look on our front page and see what's going on. You may have seen these, these slides or these pictures, if you're looking at that Kentucky Department of Public Health page. And that's the two data points they've asked us to look at every Thursday evening. Every Thursday night, what they have recommended is that superintendents log in, look at the system, and you look for two things. You look to see the positivity rate, and that's for the state. And as long as that's below six point oh, the state basically says, local board decision, do what you feel like you need to do. If it ever gets above six, he said, that's when they might try to take some type of action, because the whole state's in a area they don't want them to be in. And if you've looked all summer long, it's been very rare, if ever, that we've been over six point oh. So they picked a number that unless something really bad happens with outbreaks, the state shouldn't be back at six point oh. I think today, uh, it may have been three point something, it actually wasn't even four. So second diagram will be the picture of the overall state that shows the counties. The counties will be color-coded into red, orange, yellow, or green. And that has to do with how many cases you have per hundred thousand people. Now, there was a second, another document that went with that, and it broke down those colors, and it tells about it on one side, and then there's a chart, it's a little bit hard to read. I struggle trying to read it all today with the color schemes. But on the back of it, those color schemes, it tells you, if you're green, uh, that's when you're on track. As a matter of fact, if you were green, in theory, you could go back to normal. Uh, it's hard to get green, I will say, when you look at the map, very few counties have been green. Yeah, it's, it's very, very few, because if you have more than one case per hundred thousand, you're not green. So most of the time, you're going to be yellow or orange. So if you're yellow or orange, their rule of thumb is, then we recommend you do them like your hybrid schedule. And they recommend you moving forward, that you can move forward with athletics and things of that nature, too. If you're ever red, now here's what I want to remind you, this is a recommendation, just like we've had other recommendations, and we are going back one week earlier, so we're not following that recommendation to a T. We followed it most of the time. But their recommendation is that if you're in red, that you automatically go to remote, and you suspend all sports activities. Now, here's what I'm going to ask you tonight, and I know it really wasn't on the agenda to vote, but I'm going to ask your blessing or your guidance. That's what they have proposed, and there was a district that I was talking to today in my superintendent's regional meeting that said they're going to recommend to their board that they follow this to a T. Most everybody else did not agree with that, and I, nor do I. Here's what I would like to have your blessing on. I will certainly always look at this on Thursday night to help me decide what to do for the next week, but I don't want to rely on just this alone, and here's why. Give me an example, uh, Mullenburg County. Let me give you the best example, Union County. Union County, if you look today on that state map, if you look at today's, they're at forty-four point something, the highest in the entire state, Union County. Talked to their, their superintendent, she was on our Zoom or Google Meet there today. They've been in school for several days now, and they have yet to have one positive case with staff or students. But yet, their counting is the highest positivity rate, if you will, in the state of Kentucky. They haven't canceled anything, nor are they going to, because it hasn't had any impact on the schools yet. There's other reasons why it's going on. Look at Grayson County. Grayson County has been yellow and orange, like us. They were red the last two days until this afternoon. Well, one of their factories, they brought in a testing crew, and they tested, and they found a bunch of positives at that factory. Well, that caused their numbers for two days to change, and they were in red. And everybody was like, oh, do we even play them in sports or not? They're red. Well, they went back to orange this afternoon when they released the numbers around four o'clock. Um, so they're actually here, going to be playing volleyball in a few minutes at, at the high school.
Well, their soccer team was in quarantine.
Yes. Um, so I'm not saying this isn't important, this isn't worth looking at. I just don't feel like this alone should be our guide or a roadmap. If you tell me to follow it, then that's exactly what I'll follow, but I would rather have your permission.
How about you come up with a number of students or staff?
To, to have in Hope County, so we need to know what the, what the kids and the staff is.
I would rather have the flexibility to make a informed decision as to whether or not we should continue with athletics or sports. If we have problems at our schools, then we'll make adjustments. But as long as it's manageable and we can function.
The rest of the county will matter as far as students and staff.
You could have something else. It could be a nursing home, it could be a, a factory that causes your numbers in the county to spike, but to me, it doesn't necessarily reflect or mean that you can't potentially have school.
I mean, that's been large spikes in this county, nursing homes and factories.
Well, I'm going to assume then, hearing you speak and seeing your head gestures, that you're not going to expect me to follow this to a T, that I'm going to have some flexibility to make some judgment calls.
Right.
All right, very good. That's what I need to do.
Can I ask you about testing? Do you not, is the Health Department testing, or just the medical?
Both. You, you can get it at any place, hospital, clinics, Health Department.
My daughter's father-in-law went and had, was tested, and they told him maybe five to seven days.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and that was out at the clinic. So I don't know.
Hospital clinic?
Yeah.
Really?
Yes, that's what they told him.
I thought it was something like three to four with the.
Kathy got tested Friday, and they told her, called her Sunday afternoon, told her it was negative. Be a toss, but I haven't spent any money.
Normally, it is three to four days.
Usu- usually, it's been two to three days, but.
Now, they're fixing to get the rapid, our hospital's fixing to get the rap.
Rapid test, good.
Like, like fifteen minutes? Is that like fifteen minutes?
Right now, they're using it for their staff, um, and for some pre-surguries. But they're fixing, we don't know how many they're going to get, but they're going to get some, so that's a good thing.
And I've talked to the Health Department more in the last two or three weeks than I have in my entire career. But I've gotten to know some of them pretty well, and obviously, they're, they're going to be a guide through us in this process, too. Anytime somebody's reported, it's supposed to run through them, they, they will determine quarantine periods. We will do the contact tracing, so if a student tests positive, I will contact that school, inform them, have them do the contact tracing. And if there's any names that were identified as being exposed, I will then give them to the Health Department, and then they will take it from there, as far as contacting that family and saying they can't be back at school until ten days or whatever that timeframe may be. Uh, like I said, it's going to happen, but just don't panic when it happens. It, it's going to be okay, it's going to be something that we can manage. And, and if, if it's something ever does get out of hand, then we'll make adjustments. And if we have to go remote for a couple of weeks to let things calm down, we will certainly do that if it's required. That concludes my report, just wanted to give you an update.
All right. All right, you have your consent agenda in front of you. I need a motion to approve the consent.
How about my motion?
I'll second the motion.
Have a comment on the consent? Turn it up. All in favor? Motion, Carrie? You have your personal report for your review. Carrie's report.
All right, uh, first, this is for the month of August. We started the month with a beginning general retro balance of seventeen million, one twenty-nine, four forty-three, seventy, with revenue totaling about two point four million, and expenditures, three million, three sixty-eight, and end of month balance of sixteen million, one seventy-two, twelve seventy-nine. Our investments with Baird had a market value of two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two thirty-seven-one, and a payout value of just well over two point one million. The bank balance began with seventeen million, four oh five nine, twelve fifty-eight, and we had total deposits and other credits of two million, three sixty-eight, eight eighty-four, thirty-seven. We had our CCO payment payment of one million, five fifty-three, one twenty-eight. Our state and federal grant proceeds, four hundred and eighteen thousand, three thirty-three, sixty-seven, and our food service reimbursement, under twenty-one thousand, three thirteen, fifty-nine. Utilities taxes, a hundred and eleven thousand, eight oh three, thirty-four. You can see some of the other, a lot of taxes, banking interest, and food service receipts that were taken in. The checks and other debits for the month, a little over three point three million. Unless our outstanding checks, there again, a reconciled balance of sixteen million, one hundred and seventy thousand, two twelve seventy-nine. And, uh, just for the, just as far as the status of where we're at, we're, uh, we're actually running a little bit behind versus where we were at last year. But we knew that there's, uh, revenues aren't at quite as much. Some of the COVID activity is, is playing into this a little bit, uh, but we are a little bit behind as far as where we were at last year. But, um, I expect things to kind of change next month. We had some timing differences on when our payroll, we were supposed to originally have three payrolls in September, uh, with the cause of some, uh, some of the federal timing that they were implementing on September one, timing on when they were offering the ability to defer that. We decided to go ahead and pay that on August, or August thirty-first, rather, so that bumped three payrolls to August instead of September. So that's part of the reason why it, uh, we're behind a little bit, and I expect that to catch up, so. Do you all have any questions about that? Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the project.
I'll second.
All in favor? Carrie? All right. We have a BG four for Winston Elementary, J H B A T, your pleasure.
Yeah, as you know, that project has been completed for a while, but you know how the wheels sometimes off, well, not sometimes, the wheels do turn slow when it comes to facilities at K D E. BG four is what's required to close out a project, so that's that final document to wrap that project up. In my recommendation to approve the BG four.
Any motion to approve the BG four?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion. Have a second. All in favor? Carrie? What do we have?
I'm sorry.
Anything, how that?
In that project, was there anything left? I'm not for sure, was there any, Carrie, I'm sure there was some.
Yeah, there was some, I, I don't remember how much it was, but, um, well, you know, when we identify for sure. When we get approval of the four, we have to do a five after that. And the five will identify that residual amount, and then we can utilize that toward another future project.
Well, we got more.
The BG process, as y'all have heard me say before, is sometimes a little bit frustrating. BG's one through five, and it just, sometimes it's overkill. It could be a little more streamlined, but it is what it is.
Yeah, three would be plenty, wouldn't it?
It'd be more than enough.
All right. F Y twenty-one working budget.
All right, first, this is the, uh, the F Y twenty-one working budget. This is the last in the series of three budgets we do each year. So we, uh, we're looking at a, a total budget with all funds of sixty-three point three million dollars. Uh, you can see the breakdown here, the general fund with almost forty-eight point eight million is, of course, the largest portion of the budget. And, um, the special revenue fund, which is where all of our local, state, and federal grants are maintained, that's almost four point nine million, so that's the second largest group. And followed closely by food service fund, it's below four point eight million. As I mentioned, the, the total, total budget's sixty-three point three million. Our general fund contingency under this budget would be ten point eight million, and that also includes state on behalf payments of nine point three million, and salary benefits for all funds, thirty-seven point seven million. And our debt service payments are down a little bit this year from what they have in, in the past, one point five seven million. We get paid off like one, one bond issue, so we don't have those bond payments. The, uh, general fund revenues is on the next slide, and this just shows a breakdown. The, of course, the largest percentage of the revenue in the general fund is the seat payments, thirty-eight percent, and that from the large blue, uh, area you see shown. And of course, our twenty-six percent in the upper right corner is, represents the beginning balance for the general fund. The on behalf payments are the green, nineteen percent. And our local tax revenue makes up nine percent on the red slice of pie. Next slide, we have a breakdown of the expense side, and it's broken down by function. Munis allows us to write down, uh, our financial results in a variety of different ways. We can slice and dice it, and, and this particular is by, way is by function. And first, this shows our instruction is the largest portion, as you would expect it to be, which is forty-one percent. And the twenty-two percent in the other shaded blue is the contingency. The operations and maintenance makes up twelve percent, that's the third largest area. And this shows the breakdown by, by just category, um. And this shows the breakdown by, by just category, um, mainly the like salary and benefits total. That makes up the sixty-four percent and the contingency, twenty-three percent. Then we just look into the salary and benefits segment and to see what the largest breakdown is on that. You can see the classified makes up seventeen percent. The classified is the large, uh, blue section, which is forty-three percent. And then our on behalf payments, as you recall, I think it was nine point three million. So that makes up thirty percent. And the others that are, of course, the, um, you know, such other smaller areas of substitutes and, um, benefits like K T R S and, and county retirement as well. And this page just gives you a listing of, uh, the larger fund two or special revenue grants. And the top section shows, uh, a lot of the larger local grants that we have. Uh, the USAF reimbursements, that's where the state reimburses us for what we apply for on our E-Rate application for technology related expenses. And our reading recovery, we get from the University of Kentucky. And then the Ford School Education Program, uh, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So about three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in local grants. And then the state grants make up about one point six million dollars. You see the extended school services, uh, that's part of the flex focus funds that the state allows us to kind of move and shift those dollars around. So we, uh, we transfer those, uh, that amount over to our safe schools so that we can fund the resource officers and, um, and focus on the safety in our schools. And in our preschool area, you may recall, last year we were cut about a hundred thousand dollars. And so the general fund basically had to pick up that shortfall. Well, we got about forty thousand of that that came back this year. So that is certainly good news. That's probably the largest change that we had in, you know, the state funding. Last year it was about one point five, a little over one point five million in state. And the federal is really, uh, uh, the section that, that we had a lot of increase this year. They are up, just the state, about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And that does not count our CARES Act money. So predominantly the Title I went up the most. We gained about almost two hundred thousand there. Migrant went up forty thousand. I D E A went up twenty thousand and teacher quality went up fourteen thousand. Perkins actually went down. That's the Carl Perkins vocational funds. That actually went down about ten thousand dollars. But overall, we went up quite a bit. If you look at the whole fund, uh, in aggregate, it increased a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So, and just to recap, the, the reason you don't see the CARES Act money here, it is, that is a federal grant. The reason you don't see it here is because the state, because that was allocated in the FY twenty year. It is, it really kind of misses the budget, if you will. Because if, we didn't have it when we presented the, the FY twenty grant or budget to you. But it's actually categorized in the previous year. But we're still obviously spending it predominantly in this school year. But it's just technically not a part of this working budget. But it's a little over a million dollars for the CARES Act funds. And this just shows a breakdown of Fund Two in looking at it from a different perspective. Just looking at the expenditures by object codes, what we call those. Um, looking at salary totals and benefit totals, as you would expect. Salary benefits makes up the largest part of our expenditures. Supplies, uh, obviously captures, you know, all instructional supplies and, uh, property implements, uh, our technology equipment, computers, drum books and so forth. So all that, there again, four point eight seven million dollars. And the next page is Fund Twenty-One, which is the district activity fund. And, uh, this includes certain, all of the school accounts, uh, where they transact, uh, like the, all of their library accounts and their picture funds, their, um, the, all of our athletic programs. Those are all a part of that seven hundred and six thousand dollars you see listed. So at the top part, we show the revenue and then the expenses are listed there. And then the bottom just, just breaks all of that down by school so that you can see, um, what is spent by school totaling back to that seven hundred and six thousand dollar net. We were, if you compare the total district activity fund to last year, it's down quite a bit. But we, you know, we think about the impact that obviously the shutdown had in the spring. A lot of activities did not occur. They didn't have a set, set of pictures and so forth, so that, uh, of course, some of the spring sports did not get started and didn't, uh, didn't produce those gate revenues and so forth. On the next page, this is Fund Three Ten, Three Twenty and Four Hundred, which is our capital outlay, our F S T K building fund and our debt service fund. So this just aggregates those three funds together to give you a look at, uh, you know, we started, we carried over sixty-one thousand dollars and that was actually all in our building fund. And then we, of course, were required according to, uh, the SEEC calculation, we're required to provide local portion of our, uh, property taxes. That's the five hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then the state through the SEEC formula gives us that one million, four hundred and seventy-three, three thirty-eight, as well as the, uh, the SFCC money of two hundred and ninety-four, two oh five. Um, and then the, uh, fund transfers, that's, uh, that's for a bond payment issue that we, that we have to pay of the general fund and transfer money into the debt service fund. And, um, you can see the debt service amounts listed at the bottom on the expenditure side. And that also includes principal and interest payments. So all that totals about two point two million and we would expect to have about two hundred and seven thousand left over at the end of the year. In aggregate, there again, for all of those, all three of those funds. The bottom part just shows a listing of all of the bond issues that are currently outstanding from which, uh, we will be paying, uh, making payments on throughout this fiscal year. The balance, you know, is like you would expect on, if you looked at a loan, the, the loan or principal balance at the beginning of the year is in that first column. And then our payments will be made up of, of one point four million in principal and interest payments of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And so when we deduct the principal off of those beginning balances, then we'll have about thirteen point seven million that we would have at the end of the year. Now, the, uh, the district, if you look at those principal and interest payments, the district portion of that one point eight million, if you add those two together, uh, we're paying, as I had presented to you before earlier on the slide, about one million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand. And then the state kicks in their portion, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars. And last is the food service fund. And we've been in a, uh, a position with this fund where we've been trying to kind of pay down because the state says you've got too much money. You have, you're determined to have an excess balance. So we have been trying to, and to buy equipment that we need in certain schools, uh, dishwashers and so forth to try to spend some of that money down. And, um, so that's one reason why you're, this is, the balance would be down a little bit, uh, which is part of that nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, down from what it would have been otherwise. But, um, anyway, still in, still in really good shape and, and it will be a challenge to spend that down. So, um, but we do have a plan in force for that.
We're working on it.
And that's a good problem to have. You all have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you all.
If it's in the cafeteria, you could. But if it's not in the cafeteria, you couldn't.
You can't get a little too freaky. Roll it out there for that.
All right. Any motion to approve?
I'll make my motion.
The budget?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Motion, Carrie? Approve, uh, the bid on Wayland preschool addition?
All right. The next, uh, seven, six or seven agenda items all pertain to this project. They're all based off of what, uh, this project requires moving forward. And that's a change from what it used to be as far as the number of items. Used to, it was a little more streamlined, but now K D's requiring multiple steps and multiple contracts that have to be approved, thus so many lines. But the first one here is approving this bid. So if you looked in your packet, you should have seen the bid tab. The bid tab showed.
I need to step up just a minute. I make sure with this thing about one more.
Go ahead. The bid tab showed seven contractors showed up. I will say, uh, I've been here thirteen years and I think that's the most that I've seen in this boardroom for any project. Uh, usually we have three. I think the most I've seen before is maybe four or five, but there was seven different here. That shows that folks are eager for business. And then several even stuck around after we did the bid tab. Uh, obviously Q and S contracting was the lowest at one point two 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 million. And you see the highest was a one point four two four million. And then you had the other five there in between those, those marks. But there was multiple companies that hung around to ask more questions of R B S about the R O T C auxiliary G M and then also, uh, Render Education Center going to A T C. Because Q and S, who was low bid on this, obviously was very much interested in trying to get those two jobs as well. But so were three or four of these other co- companies. They were like, hey, we're gonna be aggressively going after those other two projects because they're on the same campus. We can basically go to that one spot and do two projects at once. So I think that when those times come, we'll see some good numbers on, on those projects as well.
That was pretty close bidding, though.
Yes, all of them were pretty tight.
Someone's been like way out there.
Yeah, several hundred thousand. In this case, uh, two hundred thousand.
Q and S, they're the ones that built the soccer building.
Are they?
Q and S.
I asked about them. I wasn't as familiar with them. R B S said we've done projects with them. And that they do, they're not as big as some of those other ones, but they do good work. And, uh, so you saw the letter, I think, from Kyle Abney that recommended that we go with them, that they've had good success with them. Uh, so it'd be my recommendation to, uh, approve and accept these bids for the Wayland preschool addition.
Uh, what else has Q and S done besides the soccer building?
That's the only thing I think they've done for us.
I point blank asked Kyle that question and he told us in here, Kathy, and I don't remember what schools he said. But there was.
Did he do, who did the?
There was two or three projects that he rattled off that they have worked with them in the school system.
Who did the, who did the southern part?
I'd be afraid to take a stab at it, Dwight. I really don't.
I haven't heard of Q and S. Some of these others I have, but not Q and S.
The hospital just, you just need to.
Is that who did those? Q and S?
Sure, yeah. That's, well, that's who we just approved to do.
The expansion? Good.
Well, I hope they got enough people doing it.
He said that they're a good company and that they've had a lot of success with them in the past. He said they're good. He said they're not as big as two or three of these other ones. Has a lot answered some of these, but.
But they got, they got on that upper soccer, they didn't, they didn't like just go up there and start something and then just pull off and it was gone. They were there regularly and.
Well, I asked about this project and, of course, you never know how projects go and they always end up seeming like sometimes pushing envelope from the date they say they'll be ready. But they act like, uh, Q and S indicated that we would be able to use that come next school year in August, that we would be able to be in that preschool addition.
Did they have an idea when they was gonna stop, who's gonna start after them?
I was under the impression that, uh, if we approve everything tonight, that they may be moving onsite and doing some activities during fall break, doing some dirt work on that edge and trying to start getting some things prepped and ready.
Oh, that would be great.
So. Sounds like, uh, a lot of people were eager to, eager to work. And, uh, they said good things about Q and S. So my recommendation would be to approve these bids, to accept these bids as presented Sunday this evening.
All right. So we approve them four?
Yeah, four, four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say the motion.
Motion and second. All in favor? Carrie? Approve any of the contracts with, uh, Q and S contract?
Since Q and S was the lowest bid and we just accepted those bids, the next item would be naturally to enter into a contract with them so that they can move forward with this project.
I'll make my motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Now we need to revise the BG one for way.
Revise the BG one. I think this may be the third time. If you remember, we did a BG one on the planning phase and that's when R B S said we think it'll be one point two five million. And then if you remember when they come and did the drawings, uh, when Kyle was here, it went to one point three million for the bid because they said due to some dirt work, it went up. Well, it ended up coming in, as you just accepted the bid, at one point two 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 million. So now we've got to revise the BG one to reflect the one point two two million for the contractor price instead of the one point three that we estimated last time. So that's, uh, actually a good revision this time. It's going in our favor.
I'll make the motion to approve the revised BG one.
I'll second.
All in favor? Carrie? For the first one, this one.
Yeah. The, the next three all are somewhat similar. Used to, back in the day, the contractor paid for inspections and they included that in their bid. But they were in control of it. They got their own inspections. They hired the people that did it. Well, that doesn't work the best because they're working for them. So therefore that gets pulled out of the project now and you have the opportunity and we took advantage of that opportunity. There's three of those different areas and we'll look at the first one, special inspections. That is typically what's involved in that one is, uh, them doing, uh, concrete samples. As they're pouring concrete for the footers or floors, whatever, they take cylinder samples and then they test it every, on seven days, fourteen, and then twenty-eight days. And they test to make sure that the concrete is good and sound before the project keeps moving on. That way, if there's an issue, they have them remedy that before doing the, the project. This is using a third party. That way, that third party will work for us to do the inspection instead of working for Q and S. That way, if there is a problem, they're gonna speak up. We're the ones paying them, not Q and S. And this does, like I said, their, their main thing they do will be, uh, the concrete inspections.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Carrie? All right. Now we gotta approve the commission proposal.
The one above it. Testing.
Testing balancing. Number eight.
All in favor?
Yeah, so approve testing balancing. Again, more of the same. This one has to do with the H V A C system. It's someone to come in and make sure that everything's been installed correctly, that the controls work correctly, so forth and so on. It's another third party. We take, there was people here that bid on that. We took the lowest bid. And so that's what you have before you. I don't have the company listed in front of me, but whoever that.
Thermal balance.
Thermal balance was the low bidder for that. So it'd be my recommendation that, uh, we approve, uh, them to do the testing and balancing for the Wayland project.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make it. Second. All in favor? Carrie? Now.
Yeah. Commissioning, more of the same. It's more testing. They, they do exhaust systems. They do the water, the heat pumps, things of that nature. It, it's something else that commissioning used to not be required, but it is required now of K D E. So we had to get a proposal for that as well. So you see it's Performance Commissioning Agency out of Nicholasville. Uh, they may have been the only one, I think, potentially have bid on that. So i- it's a requirement that you have to do. So it'd be my recommendation that we approve, um, the commissioning proposal for the Wayland project.
I'll make the motion.
pick that up, but then we would be reimbursed at a later date, once they sell the bonds. That's if there's a construction payment to occur before we sell bonds. No guarantee that it will, but it's possible that it could, depending on how fast they start. So with this resolution, by you approving it tonight, it allows us to go ahead and pay for it out of general fund, and then be reimbursed for that later on. But it gives us the authority to cover those bills until the bonds are sold. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Be my recommendation to approve the capital expenditure reimbursement resolution.
All right, we have a motion here.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Carry.
Approve appointment to Baird and the service, that's Dwight.
All right, that is basically just giving Baird, formerly Hilliard Lines, the authority to sell those bonds on our behalf for these projects. That takes action in order for them to start doing what they need to do on their end. So it'd be my recommendation that we allow Baird to be the one to service those bonds for us, since they do all the other for us.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a second.
All in favor? Carry.
Number thirteen, special needs bus, purchase of...
Yeah, I asked you to add number thirteen this afternoon, this topic come up. In our budget, that Ms. Meredith reviewed with you this evening, even, you know, we talked about before ordering three buses. This year, with this Volkswagen grant that has occurred, if you have buses that are daily route, in daily route, they're being used every day on a route, okay? If they're being used every day on a route.
They get dug down over here.
And if they're a two thousand one or older, and you're using them every day, then you can participate in this grant and get half of the cost of a bus back. We have two buses that are two thousand one or older that we're using every single day. So we're going to be able to apply for that grant, and basically what's going to happen is, that's right, so out of the money that we're going to use to get three buses, we're really going to be able to use that same money, pretty much, and get a fourth bus. Well, one of those that we need is a special needs bus. All but one of our daily use buses in special education has air conditioning. So if we get a new special ed bus, now every special needs bus would have air conditioning. Talking with the mechanics today, that's really what they would love to see happening, and I said, okay, we'll talk about buses probably the next board meeting to get approval to order four buses. Lo and behold, then maybe they set me up, I don't know. But while I'm out there talking with them, Dave Garver pulls up, and he's the Thomas salesman, and he's talking, and they're saying, hey, we're telling the superintendent here, the boss, that we need a special needs bus. And he said, you know what, I got one next week going to be here that I'm going to use for a demo, but if you want it, it's yours. And I said, well, you know what, I'm having a board meeting tonight, and if they want it...
I wonder if they knew that.
We'll take it. And he said, all right, I'll wait for you to call us tomorrow. So I said, well, we'll talk about it tonight and see if we can determine to do...
Is that what that statement was about?
Yeah, I said, my point is that sucker, I may have walked right into that one, I don't know, but we need it nonetheless, so be my...
What's the price on that?
Uh, I didn't look at the, yeah.
About ninety-eight or ninety-nine, nine or more.
And it'd be a Thomas. Thomas, again, this year is actually, that's what we've been buying, we like that style, and it's actually cheaper than International and Bluebird this year. Thomas is the better priced bus this time.
It's got channel windows and everything, though.
Yep, and it will have air conditioning, so be my recommendation that we approve the purchase of a special needs bus, and we may have it here in just a couple of weeks or so.
That's just really too much of a coincidence, you know?
All right, we have a motion and a second.
All in favor? Motion carry.
What about the other three?
Usually I think it's November first, I think, is when that window opens, that you actually go in to order them, so this being September, at the October meeting, we'll get the approval with the other three, and that way we'll have the prices out here and can tell you exactly what they'll cost.
All right, we have a reason for closed session.
Yes, sir, possible litigation.
All right, any motion going to closed session, first carry has six one point eight point oh.
I'll make it.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Yeah, a second.
All in favor? Motion carries, we are down in closed session.